All the orders of meeting November 14, 2023 for public hearing in reference to the help grant.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Mike Klein Peter, Klein Peter Consulting. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Notice for this public hearing was posted in the Western Lane News on November 14. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss the application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. As you know, Wayne County received a million dollars of help funds from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Wayne County has decided to allocate $550,000 in the help funds to the town's water project. OAKR requires that we go through the formal application process to get access to these funds. So tonight is the first of two required public hearings. The second one will be in December. So we will be applying specifically for a water project and we will be using 550,000 of the grant dollars. And we will be contributing a local match of 55,000 of the town's ARPA funds. That's contingent upon getting awarded. We want to make sure that residents have a chance to ask any questions or voice any concern or support for the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Thomas to talk about the project.
Yep, their project will have four components to it. Now we have a brief overview of each of those four. The first one would be well cleaning and well rehabilitation. The town has two raw water wells that supply the town with water. We'll be doing exactly like the title said, we'll be cleaning them and rehabilitating those. We will be replacing customer meters as well as distribution valves and hydrants. There, we've worked with the town to identify some strategic ones in the distribution system that we've identified. Those will be replaced and then additionally 238 customer meters will also be replaced. We will do GIS mapping to help update the town's GIS. So they better know where everything's located and, you know, future work will all have electronic access now to the lines and those points within the system. And lastly, we will be installing security cameras at the wellhouse to, so the town can monitor, you know, their wells in the wellhouse.
Mike, I may correct one statement you made. I think you didn't mean to say it. You said it was published November 14th. It was a hearing for November 14th. It was published November 1st.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you tell the crowd when we think we might find out when we're awarded? That would probably be a big question. Everybody's dying to know.
Yeah, so we're gonna do the public hearing tonight. The second public hearing will be at the December council meeting, which is what day?
12th.
The 12th, so the second public hearing will be the 12th. Then we'll apply first week of January. Typically, you have to wait because it's a competitive process, but since we already know we have allocation, I anticipate within 30 days, OAKR will give us an award, which would mean early February, we would be officially awarded. They would send us the contract to sign and then we would go out to bid. How long do you guys need? You have up to six months.
Yeah. I think he's through everything, so it would be...
May-ish.
What?
May, June.
Yeah.
What are you thinking? So it's probably gonna go out to bid, May, June, depending on how quickly the engineers can get done. So, you know, this is probably next summer work, really. That's what we're looking at.
Sure. Anything else we can do to support the cause?
Yes, we gotta go through the formal application process. And as part of that, there were some forms that needed signed today. Bob looked at and approved to get signed, so we got those signed. We also need to get letters of support for residents that say, hey, I'm in favor of the town going after this grant money. It helps keep our rates lower, you know, we're not having to borrow this money to raise rates. If they've been impacted with issues with valves or any water issues, you know, write a letter stating, hey, here's what I've experienced. You know, since this is guaranteed funded, it's a little easier to get funded, but we want to make sure that when OAKR gets monitored by HUD, the federal agency, they've got a complete file of the project that looks good. So the more details, the better. We will do a residential survey on Survey Monkey that just asked some questions about, have you impacted? I haven't put it together yet, but that'll be presented at the December meeting that says, you know, have you experienced water pressure issues? Have you experienced water issues? Are you in favor of the town applying for the grant? Just a very basic survey.
Yeah, that's something people can drop off here to the town hall.
Yes, we'll have hard copies at town hall available as well. And all that stuff's just to help with supporting documentation for the application. Other than that, the environmental review process was sent out. That's one of the requirements. That's well on its way. So everything's looking good. It's just kinda going through the process step by step at this point.
Well, this is a grant that you've been working on since last whatever.
No, no, this is, that's a separate grant. But our water portion is utilized, we will be getting money from the Help the County grant that we applied for. Some of those funds will be taking care of some of the work that was originally a part of the USDA grant.
Where's that grant at?
That's still with the federal government.
I'm sorry?
That's still with USDA. We're waiting on them.
They haven't done nothing yet.
They haven't done nothing with it yet. So the benefit that we have, though, is that we have the planning document in place and that's what has allowed us to have access to this $400,000 to pick out some of those initial plans, so.
Yeah, so by doing that planning study, you know, when the commissioners were looking at who's got a project on the shelf ready to go, you guys obviously had something ready to go and that's what kind of bumped you up the list.
So we could take this money and go ahead and start on the well and the pumps and things with other... What happens if the grant don't come through? Does that stop and run out of money?
Well, I mean, if that doesn't come through, I mean, talking theoretically off into the future, at least we'll have these projects done out of it. You know, our planning document's good for five, six, seven years. So we have multiple options or opportunities to seek funding for it. But what we'll do now is we'll revise that to take out the projects that have already been completed, which you'll see, so it'll be reflective in the overall cost of the project and how much we seek from the federal government, so.
So I think all that stuff's still going on. We're in wait mode, but while we were waiting, this opportunity popped up, so we jumped on it to get this money to keep things... So it makes the other project a little smaller.
Yeah.
Which is all good stuff.
Yeah, all good stuff.
Yes.
Anyone else have any other questions? All right, this time we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Go ahead and open up the regular November 14, 2023 meeting. Admiral Call, please.
Rex Snyder, present.
Nathan Alrick is here.
Jim Devon, present.
Bruce Mole's present. I guess we got any other guests here tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
Thomas, did you have any more? Did you give us your update that you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any approval of amendments and adjustments?
Make a motion to accept amendments and adjustments as reported.
There was one small typo.
Yeah, I got one. Let's see if it's the same one.
Mr. Gabbard's name. Your name wasn't spelled in the first paragraph.
What?
Oh, no!
Yep.
It was. Thank you.
All right, anything else? This was the minutes and adjustments.
I'll sign it.
We have a motion, second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll go on to reports. Police report. Just missed one.
There was one 911 hangup, one business alarm, one animal problem, two business checks, four community policing events, one verbal domestic, one harassment, one illegal burn, one investigation, one juvenile problem, one motor vehicle accident, property damage only, one noise disturbance, one personal assist, four speak with officers, five special patrol, three suspicious persons, 20 traffic stops, one vehicle lockout, one VIN check, and one issue with wires down.
What's this special patrol's amount to?
It could be that a citizen has requested maybe extra patrol in the area of their residence. Maybe they've seen something that they find suspicious going on, so we provide a little bit more.
Or if somebody goes on vacation, they might tell them that they're gonna be out of town.
Fair.
You have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Fire report.
Zero ALS, BLS, 190, three with three. A 911 fire runs, one illegal burn, and one structural fire came from the city. Zero water.
Where was the illegal burn at?
David Street. Kind of an annoying situation.
He's too stubborn to come and get the mid, or is it something?
It's not supposed to be burning.
Oh, okay.
Had one of those tonight, didn't we?
It wasn't illegal, but it was the neighbor that retired it.
Yeah.
At this point, it wasn't illegal, put it that way. I'm saying it hasn't been.
Is that what the smell, the burn, the fire smells have been smelling around town about every night?
Yeah, I would say this last one was right near your neighborhood when we had it tonight.
Which the ordinance does state, don't burn it after dark.
Yeah, this particular one tonight, I mean, just like right in the front yard, like 20 feet off of US 40, so it goes right into the neighbor's house. It's just frustrating for the neighbors, I'm sure.
That's been smelling fires. I assume that people burning their fireplaces and stuff was...
There probably is something like going on.
There been something out in the open?
All right, we'll move on to building.
Yeah, we have two permits this last month. Roger Zimmer for Pobarn and Kelly Shelton, privacy events.
What do you got with the bill loose right now?
Yeah.
I didn't know anything was pending or anything. I didn't know there was anything pending. We needed to bring it up or anything, or?
No, no, just the, we're waiting on Bob on the other thing, so.
All right, and this stuff's your superintendent report.
You guys have your reports. I did get a complaint about the Christmas lights being up early, but it was from somebody that don't even live in town, so it's okay.
I got you to lose, so.
We get, well, we gotta get them while we can get them, you know?
Yep. Well, it's nice. It looks good.
Do you predict that somebody's gonna ask for your help from a neighboring town?
Yes.
Is that something we need to approve or does Lenny take it upon himself to take care of?
He decides, I just take care of it.
It's usually not that big a deal anyway, as long as you're not moving to something else.
Exactly. I just have to coordinate with him when I can do it, so.
They're real good about giving him enough time so that he can put it in his schedule.
Good deal. Ask them when to wait until it's too late and then us have to rush to get an approval and...
Right. Appreciate that.
Okay, we'll just move along to the first report.
Okay, you should have your time cards and your fuel report. The other stuff I have is down the agenda. We can go on down the agenda if you want.
You want down to, you going down to old business first then?
Yeah, that's my...
Old business, 285 South State Street, next steps?
That's on me. They are attempting to stealth serve our amended complaint on Mr. Stapleton, who is behind the trust that owns this. He's now moved to Las Vegas. So it's gonna always prove difficult to get any kind of service on him and get any action, even if you get a judgment against him. Consequently, I have thought of an alternate procedure if you want to use it, if you want to gamble, and more importantly, if you want to spend any money. As you know, we moved from just the unsightliness to unsafe building. Lenny had sent him a letter. Unsafe building violations are the one area that you can use self-help if they don't do what they are supposed to do. Therefore, if we send a letter, this takes it out of the courts, or at least ignores the court. We need to send it to the last known tax address where he gets tax statements. We don't have to worry about it getting served. We just send it to the tax address, which is this post office box 221 in Cicero. Show it that he is to come for the hearing next December, at your meeting next month, assuming he will not show up. We are saying, as we did in Lenny's prior letter this summer, the remedy that we want is total removal of the building structure and all the debris associated therewith. If we send the letter, certify mail, even though it's refused, it's been sent to the last known tax address. If he doesn't show up, then the town can on their own do what we have asked him to do, which means tear down the building and remove the debris. So you could get an estimate of what it's gonna cost. At that point, we do it. And he may come in later, but he's been given every chance. So it would be similar to what we did on the Schroeder property. Now, there was a collapsed building. But here, if you want to get an estimate and do it, if we send this letter to the post office box, he doesn't show, thereby you affirming what Lenny is saying is the required action to remove the building, then when he doesn't show, the town could do the, fix it yourself and tear it down, remove all the stuff, and then we sue him for those costs. If he doesn't pay that, like Schroeder, it gets added to the taxes. If you want to go that route as compared to stealth trying to get a judgment against him.
Has he been paying the taxes?
He has paid up until, we don't know this fall, but of course, you were, people were still mailing them out yesterday. So I don't know about yesterday. It had paid through the spring. So he must accept that mail. He just refuses everybody else's mail. And it's amazing how many places around the state he is being sued on these kind of realms and properties.
Wow.
So what you're ever gonna get is probably just out of this property. And so how to get it best out of the property is to do something to add to the taxes. But in the meantime, if you want to spend the money to tear it down, remove it yourself, or, I mean, even if you just remove the debris at that time, at that point, you're allowed the self-help. So that's, that's my recommendation, even if you don't end up spending the money for the complete teardown, is to, so that you can get something done that allows this action by yourself.
And, go ahead.
Saying to me like we need to get something done, get that building down before somebody gets hurt in it.
And on a side...
I don't think it would hurt to at least get an estimate of what was taken down.
On a side note with that, there, Wayne County, with through the ARPA money that they're, they have, one of the programs that they were putting together was a BLIGHT program and they were putting it out there for each community that participated could do that. So I asked them, because at the time they discussed that, we were in court, you know, dealing with the court. And, and they said, you know, that is one way of doing it, but yes, that property would qualify for that. I don't know how long that will take, but we're, you know, we're going through a process now anyway, so that might help get funds to pay for it. So I actually have a meeting Thursday, so that's something that I can ask and see what I need to do to get on that program so that we can see if we can get some funding for it.
Well, I've prepared the letter for Lenny's signature, which is the second one to follow from the summer. It goes to the post office box. I know it's not gonna go through, but it's the prerequisite and showing that we will have hearing on it December 12, 7:00 PM here. And at that point, the council can either affirm, which I assume they'll do, resend it or modify it. Guy won't show up, but at least we will have done what was required and then allowing us to do the self-help.
So after the 12th next month?
Yep.
Do we go in there and board up the windows and doors and stuff to make it...
Yep, that's my... I know he could say, well, I didn't get a chance. Sure, you have a chance. You just continue to refuse mail that's being sent to the right place. So yes, you can do that. You can, at a minimum, board it up and do it and get it ready for demolition next spring.
If we want to personally hand deliver, you know, later to Vegas, I can take a business trip.
I'm saying. I got the address. It's a sweet...
Wait till next year.
Oh, for you to go. I think council could just meet out there and take the legal case.
You need the clerk to take that.
Do we want to spend the time and money to board this thing up or we just wanna start with the teardown process and not waste the money on...
Well, I'd like to see if the county would help pay for the teardown process, if we can just, you know, board it up.
We will, yeah, we, we need to board it up. Either way we go, we still need to get an estimate because even for the program, we need estimated costs. So we will, kinda like Mike was doing for the, for that grant, we're gonna continue to move forward. And I will know, hopefully I will be able to get in contact with who I need to Thursday to see what their requirements are so that we can see about getting on that list as well.
So you motion to get this going next step?
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to send a letter to this address and have him receive a meeting here at the next meeting.
Second, Dave.
Motion, second. Call in favor.
Aye.
I noticed your prior one was on the town's letter. He had, what I'll do, I'll just email this. I mean, here, I'll give you a copy, but maybe email it to you, then you can print or she can print it on the town letterhead. You wanna do it then?
Sure.
Since this is just on plain paper.
Yeah, I can do that.
Do you ever see anybody over at that property?
No.
For any realm of possibilities at all?
No, just kids and things like that.
Hanging it on the door would be a benefit.
It almost seems like he's abandoned it, don't you think?
Yeah, that's why they just abandoned it.
The door's there. It's just open all the time.
That's right. There's no porch.
Hanging on the rafters and...
Do I also need a motion to move forward with getting information on the, on the BLIGHT and the other program and the bid or the estimate?
It wouldn't hurt a motion, but you can kinda get the feel from them. They're authorized. You can do that. It's not really formal.
Yeah, I agree. Good.
Okay, thank you.
And get the bid?
Yes, I'm gonna get an estimate as well. Do I need two or three estimates or at least?
It's not legally required. It's prudent practice to get at least a couple.
Okay.
Because services are not, when you're buying product, it's required. Services are not required, but still prudent.
Okay.
Okay, move on to salary ordinance, 2023-6.
Okay, we, we had our budget meeting this summer. We had talked about budgeting for a 2% increase. And then when we had our work session, we talked about and approved our medical insurance for next year with the plan that the town would, instead of paying 90%, would pay 82, 87.2% of the premiums. And then the employees pay a portion of the premiums and a portion of the deductible. And that's listed in, in the ordinance 2023-6. I left everything else as it was, with the clothing allowance, with the holiday bonuses for the employees and the $15 a month that we pay towards their cell phones. Instead of paying for plans, we, we just give them an allotment towards their cell phones since everybody uses the cell phones nowadays.
Did you say 12.8% employee pay part of the premium?
Yes.
Cause that's why I didn't know.
Yes, yeah. Town pays 87.2, so.
Yep.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the salary ordinance 2023-6. Motion, second. Call in favor.
Aye.
I need, I need everybody to sign that one. And, oh, the next one is Transfer Resolution R7-2023. This is just miscellaneous transactions, cleaning up, where some appropriations went in the negative, others had, within that same fund, had extra money. So please, just cleaning that up so that everything is in the positive, putting it in the air.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Transfer R7-2023. Call in favor.
Aye.
And then you can talk about, since you're here, you can talk about the trash cans?
Yes, we had, well, I had thought about we could get trash cans for the park and just so we can set out down there. I looked into trash cans and they're really expensive, but I did talk to Cambridge. They have their old trash cans that they took off the sidewalks down there. They got them just sitting over there. I talked to them. He took it to their board. They said if we wanted to give them a donation, we could take as many of them as we want. I mean, some of them need repaired and things like that, which should be able to fix. But I, I, I was gonna suggest that we, you know, we just make a donation to Cambridge for the trash cans of probably $100 or something like that.
My question, is it a financial donation or a labor donation?
I guess it's probably a financial donation.
So where do you want to think about putting these trash cans? Are they gonna be bolted down and...
Yes, yes, they will be fastened down. One over by the newer little kids' park over there. We got one there. The shelter house, I put one there and possibly one somewhere around the ball court, probably.
These have lids on them, right?
Yeah, they have the, they're just, they're, they're covered and then they have to push, you have to push in to drop the trash in.
And then would you guys be responsible for emptying them every week?
Absolutely.
Are they bigger than the ones they have down there now?
At Cambridge? Yeah. Oh, no, they're, they're this, I think they're a little smaller.
Okay, cause the ones they have down there now are, they're smaller than the ones I have out here, but...
Yeah, no, they're, they might be the same size.
And how many of them you got?
They got, I think there's nine or 10, maybe 12 down there.
I can see you put a couple of them in the shop.
I can see you put a couple of them in the shelter houses, like during the, for you against and stuff like that, they could probably get filled up pretty quick.
Yeah. Well, the issue we're having is, is, um, you know, they, they, they use the dumpsters down there and then nobody knows it until it's too late, we drive by and see them, then we gotta take them up and, but they're, the dumpsters are all put up now, so, um, they're all in the shed, so.
Well, a lot of the issue with the dumpsters, they blow over when it gets windy and then...
Yeah, and you can, and you put them on that hill for the trash truck to pick them up, and then it winds up blowing over and going down the hill, and then you got the trash to clean up and...
I mean, I think these cans will be a lot more decorative, it'll maybe give people a better chance, if you spread them out across the park, they actually use them.
Yeah, so that we don't have all the trash going everywhere and they just kinda...
How bad were they damaged, where you just have to paint them or what?
Some of them just paint and, um, you know, like there's, they have locks on them, some that like they don't have the keys for them, so, um, you know, we'd have to change the locks or whatever on them, you know, just, the, the, the repairs are minor. And, and there's, you know, in comparison, I mean, it's like, these cans out here, these are fifteen hundred dollars a piece. So, you know, I mean, I just, I just don't think we need to spend fifteen hundred dollars for a can for the park whenever we can get these and, um, make them fit our need.
I mean, do you think they will accept that donation, or is it just a?
They just said a donation. I don't think it really mattered to them how much it was, so, I just kinda...
I think we could probably give a little more, seeing how they've been working with us on a lot of stuff.
I mean, I'd say you just take all of them and do the best with what you got and if there's something you don't like or need, you can toss it or give it to Milton or something.
I mean, and that's, that's fine too, I just, I was just throwing that number out there, you know, just, I don't know.
Would they have two fifty? You're the money ladies, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, will you donate two hundred and fifty dollars to the town of Cambridge City in exchange for their used trash cans?
All second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carry.
Okay, I have a couple more things that, of course I do. I had, um, a web meeting today with, um, Indiana Office of Technology. Um, since we are working on updating our website anyway, um, I went to this meeting to, to see about this, um, the IN.gov email address and then the IN.gov webs, web domain, both of those domains. Uh, the Indiana and, well, the federal government is kinda pushing because of the cybersecurity activity for municipalities and other government entities to transition over to a .gov, um, because they can manage it and make sure that, um, everything is more secure. People are not looking at seeing, you know, DublinIN.org and then somebody might have one that's DublinIN.com and they go on there and if they make it to look like ours and they go on there thinking they're gonna make a payment and it's not really us. So, um, that, that was one of their main arguments, to keep it, um, as a government, um, domain, um, for the security of the people of Indiana. It is free for emails and, um, website domain, subdomain. And, um, with that, the federal government is now saying, if you are applying for federal money, uh, they are going to start awarding only to people that, communities that have that domain. Right now, it had, it is not a full-fledged requirement, but what they're doing is saying, okay, these people have it, these people don't, so these people are gonna get first dibs. So because we are in a time where we need, um, and are utilizing more, um, funding from all of the governments, from agencies out there, I recommend that we move forward with, um, requesting a subdomain, an IN.gov domain. That will change our email addresses, it will change our website. I did talk to Ryan and Ryan said, he put that together for Cambridge as well, um, and worked with, um, IOT in doing that, said it went very well, they were very helpful in, in putting it together and he doesn't see a problem with our new website, um, working with that domain and, uh, doing the emails.
How much does this thing cost?
That part doesn't cost anything.
Just kind of, just a ton of all?
Yeah. There are other options they have available that can cost more, but, um, for that, for the emails and the domain, if we do just that part of it, we don't have to have anything.
Does that tell apartment need, or do we need to charge?
Um, I, I don't know, I need to, to look into some of the others. Now, they do, the one things that I did look at, which I also gave you copies of, is they also, through those domains, they offer payments options, um, that we can put on our website. Right now, we go through PayGov and, um, it is credit or debit card only and they charge 4%. Indiana, this would be based off of their information and, and we're finding that Indiana is spreading out a lot of, they, they get stuff at, at state discount and stuff, so they're offering a lot more stuff to the smaller communities at those costs. Um, so there's two different companies here that they recommend and they use, they have contracts with and, um, just like credit card processing, um, similar to what I have now is 2.15% instead of 4%. And they also accept, um, checks, e-checks, and we don't offer that, so it would give us more options, PayPal, uh, Venmo, Apple Pay, G Pay, those kinda things, so.
Is there any other towns that have gone to this shit?
Um, there is on the front, it shows, um, Hart County, Town of Sandborn, these are just some of them that they had on there, Old Beige Township, Noblesville School, cause they also do the schools as well, um, City of Scottsburg. Now, like I said, Cambridge has done, um, they have done the IN.gov stuff and I'm not sure what she uses, I know she has stuff out there for people to be able to pay online. They don't take payments in-house like we do, um, but there are options where we can, we could utilize that program and still offer it in-house too. So, um, it, with your blessing, I would like to, um, move forward and get more information on that.
I agree. I think it'd be great to have all the other avenues for payment too, cause I mean, all this generation now they...
Oh, it is, it is. And, uh, so I think that would be a good, um, that would be something good, uh, for us, so I will look into that. Plus with the security stuff and like I said, the fact that we are utilizing a lot more of, um, the state and federal grants, it's definitely worth, um, I don't wanna be turned down because we, we didn't stay up with security things that we need.
Especially with the free right now, that's the best.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I have to look more in depth of the, what, what is chargeable and what it, what all goes with the free stuff. Um, but what he was talking about was, um, the email and the, um, website is at no cost. So there is other stuff that, that we can get that, you know, other options. Um, the other thing that I have, um, in one of my classes, um, there is a lot of new legislation coming out as far as, um, requirements for capital assets, uh, inventory, things that we have to have so that we can, it's... Gatsby, is that how they say it? Um, it's for the financial statements and stuff, to put everything in a more business-like, um, form. So they, they're having more requirements for that. They have not required little communities to do that in the past, but they're moving probably in the next couple of years to making everybody go to that. Our internal controls and different audit requirements and then there's some new state board of accounts requirements. And a lot of the communities are reaching out to, um, well, here's four of the businesses that, um, the one that I was looking at, these services, they can come in and go through what we have, make sure we're in compliance, what we're not in compliance with, they can give us some ideas and help us to get that way, um, and give us time, instead of waiting until the last minute and go, oh, you're gonna get audited and you're gonna get fined because you're not here. So, um, I had the recommendation of, uh, the local government services, um, she used to be a clerk treasurer for twenty-some years, uh, she's got other people before she retired that, that this is what they do. And then she also has somebody that's a former state board of accounts employee that works with her, that, um, works on the fixed acts, at, assets side of things. So, um, I would like to reach out and talk to them more and see if, um, what it would cost to have them come in and just kinda look over our stuff and make sure that we're, we're where we need to be, if that's okay. But I mean, I would have to come back with costs before we go forward, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that, but...
Sounds good.
Just a blessing to make sure, especially with having, we're getting ready, you know, we're gonna have to have a, um, federal type audit as this, um, other grant goes through, um, just to make sure that we're where we need to be for all of that, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm done talking, my throat is going crazy. I'm done, I'm done.
All right, we'll move on to claims.
I got a question on the claims.
Yes, sir.
What was the Leary Construction, it's a pretty hefty amount, what was that for?
That is for the maintenance on the tower, we pay that, um, we have a maintenance contract with them for ten years.
Annually?
And we pay that annually, once a year at the end of the year.
All I have is, I was gonna remind people of the sheriff's sale.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
On December 7th, 10:00 AM, sheriff's sale of the lot that we are having the execution sale regarding Schroder. And a couple of questions have come up, so that there's clarity on that sale. When one goes to a sheriff's sale, you, the sheriff will not warrant that there's good title, so they don't want, because they have, I don't know, hundreds of sheriff's deeds at each one of the sheriff's sales, they're not gonna stand behind it, that if there's some lien that's on there, they don't want people suing the sheriff's office because it was an unclaimed title. So what people get, they get just about as good a title as the plaintiff's attorney was. And so I did do a search beforehand, we named everybody that I could find, so I'm pretty comfortable that there aren't any other liens other than that. But if a buyer really wants to be safe, they can on their own do a lien search before the sheriff's sale. Um, now, and, and some buyers will do that at a sheriff's sale, especially if it's a property they're gonna pay a hundred thousand dollars for or something, they wanna double check what the plaintiff did. So if I had missed something, didn't name somebody that had a lien on it, then the buyer takes that risk. But I did, I checked everything and so I'm fairly comfortable on it, but they still don't get a warrant deed, they get a sheriff's deed at that sale. The second question that comes up is, it talks about subject to any taxes that are a lien. All the taxes that are due this year will be paid, but as you know, Indiana is always a year behind, so even though they're not due until next spring and fall, they are technically a lien and an amount unknown right now. So a buyer will be subject to those taxes, but they're not due yet. And so that's why that wording is the way it is on the notice of the sale for both of those items. So we hope there's just a hundred people out there bidding on that property on the 7th.
Before you move on, what's the status on this damn stoplight out here? Are they gonna fix it or?
They are, they are going to fix it, um...
Within the next ten years or?
It was supposed to, it was supposed to have been within the next couple of weeks. So that's been three weeks ago, I think.
Let me see what month.
It, it was fighting between NDOT and Milestone. Uh, NDOT gave in and said that they would take care of it. Um, we reached out to the person that Lenny had been speaking to, to make sure that I got an email saying, yes, NDOT is gonna be responsible, they're gonna take care of it, um, before I paid Milestone. So I paid Milestone, I've got an email saying that NDOT is going to be responsible for that, and so it's on their schedule. And I know they use a third-party, um, contractor for that, but they're the ones that we're pushing to get this done, so hopefully they'll get it done.
They're pushing, they were pushing for us to get it done, get it fast, but they're dragging their feet.
Yeah, so we'll see how.
So the process are, there's a chance of getting it done in the near future?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I haven't heard anything from them, so I, I keep looking to see somebody out here working, you know, but...
I know they were doing something, um, at the stop sign, at the stop lights the other day, but I don't know if they were just checking, they were in the box, so...
That's probably screwing that person up in there.
They're making sure it stays equal.
Yeah. Did you, uh, receive an email from Leary? Cause they just done a, um, why, he brought that up and it reminded me, he just done a, um, inspection of the tower and everything too, so I didn't know if you got an email.
I haven't got the results, but yeah.
Okay, okay, cause he told me that, he told me that they were gonna send those, so...
I'll probably, it comes from a different, um, office than the bill does.
Yeah, yeah. I understand that, I just didn't know if you got one yet or not.
I'll check and see if I have tomorrow.
All right, we're back to claims.
I'll make a motion to tip claims, presenter?
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Financials?
I got a question on financials, I mean, you may not know the exact answer at the moment, Julie. We've got, um, budgeted seventy-eight hundred for our part-time help, do you know how we're doing at this time in the year?
No, but I can get it to you before, before we leave.
And looking at that too, does, uh, you're helping know that she's got that clothing allowance? Does she use it, take advantage of it?
Oh, for a jacket?
Uh-uh.
Um, she needs, we, she needs a new one, uh, we did one, we've not done one since. I had to remind her that she had PDO days for her doctor's appointments, cause she didn't realize, she, she didn't remember that she had that, so...
Make sure she's getting advantage of all her payroll stuff.
I will remind her of that.
All right, we're back to financials.
I'll make a motion, will you prove financials as presented? I'll second.
Have a motion of second on financials, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else have anything else for us, if you?
Motion to adjourn.
Right, a motion to adjourn.